Okay, we're recording.
Thank you. Okay, so it is 6:00 PM, December 9th, 2020, and I'm going to convene this meeting of the Seidra Woolley City Council. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, if you will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. We'll move into roll call. I'll begin with Councilman Allen.
Present.
Councilman DeYoung.
Present.
Councilwoman Kestie.
She's there.
I think I see a thumbs up. There we go. Councilwoman Kinzer. And I don't, let's see here. There you are. Okay, thank you, Brenda. Councilman McGoughan. If you could give a verbal, because this is also going to be an audio, so audiotape as well as videotape, so.
Can you hear me?
There we go. Yes, thank you.
My Zoom's been freezing up today, so the mute, unmute was having some trouble. Sorry.
No problem. Thank you. Thank you, Brendan. And Councilman Owen.
Present.
Thank you, everyone. So I'm going to look for an approval of the agenda. I do have one request. I'm asking that when you approve the agenda, that we approve with moving the, it's actually the last item on our list, which is the appeal of hearing examiner's decision, moving that to basically the top of the list, so right underneath public comments. I know there's people here who are waiting to do that, so perhaps to make it easy for them and to allow them to move on, so they don't have to sit through the entire council if they do not wish to do so. So do I have a motion with that change?
Madam Mayor, this is Councilmember DeYoung. I move the agenda as amended.
Thank you. Okay, I had a motion by Councilman DeYoung, seconded by Councilman McGoughan, to move the agenda with the change to move the appeal, the appeal hearing exam decision to right below the, right after public comments. Thank you, everyone. Now looking for approval of the consent agenda items one through six.
Madam Mayor, I move the consent agenda, one through six.
Thank you.
At a mayor, Mr. Allen, Councilman Allen, I'll second.
Madam Mayor, I have a comment, please.
Yes?
Item number five, Joe Fournette being reappointed to the Planning Commission. Is there anyone here to speak on his behalf? And I know I've certainly even enjoyed the input that Mr. Fournette has provided. Is there someone to talk about his acumen?
Mr. Coleman, would you like to address that? I know that you're, you lead the Planning Commission. I know that Joe Fournette, he was asked and he's excited about doing it again.
Yeah, so Joe Fournette's been a great part of the Planning Commission, and we were excited when he said he would like to continue to serve for another six-year term.
All right, thank you. So I have a motion by Councilman DeYoung and seconded by Councilman Allen to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay. All right, so we have tonight, I have asked Cheryl to join us tonight. It, I wanted it on the agenda, somehow it got overlooked and was not placed on the agenda, but I wanted for all of us to do a presentation to her. She has been with the City of Seidra Woolley for 23 years, and Cheryl has been absolutely amazing. She's our go-to person. She's very kind. She's somebody who always has a wonderful word to say to somebody. She's been awesome to work with, absolutely awesome to work with. Cheryl has gone out of her way, as she's preparing to retire, to put together, it's a notebook that has the details of her job. So whoever that individual is that comes in behind her will be able to know exactly what the details are. But that's our Cheryl. She's very detail-oriented. And also for many, many years, she has also been the one who has scribed our meeting. So Cheryl, thank you for joining us tonight. And it is with a sincere heart that I say thank you so much for all the years that you have been here at Seidra Woolley. You've been outstanding. You know, you're a golden individual, and you're going to be missed greatly. I gotta say I'm a little envious, because I think it would be wonderful to be retiring. But Cheryl, if you'll allow me, I'll read this plaque and then I will give it to you later. Is that all right? It says, "In recognition of outstanding service to Cheryl Brew, Finance Department, from August 11th, 1997 to December 31st, 2020, in grateful appreciation for 23 years of dedication and exceptional service to the citizens of Seidra Woolley, your professionalism tempered with compassion is extraordinary. You have always been a joy to work with. With sincere gratitude and on behalf of the people of this great city, Mayor Julia Johnson." So thank you, Cheryl. I know you probably had better things to do tonight than to be here, but I wanted you to hear this. Thank you so much, Cheryl.
Well, thank you for your kind words. It has been a real pleasure to work for the city and for the citizens of Seidra Woolley. It's always been my home and will continue to be, but I am looking forward to the next phase of my adventures. And I also look forward for good things to come for Seidra Woolley. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Cheryl. Blessings.
Did you take your medicine?
Okay, and then moving along, we will do staff reports, and I will turn this over to Chief Klinger.
Good evening, Council Mayor. I wish we had real good news for you, but we don't. Our numbers are still well above the target numbers for getting us out of this COVID stuff. We're at about 301 of 100,000 right now, and these are all pre-Thanksgiving numbers. We're not expecting to get the Thanksgiving spikes until probably next week or so, before we'll start seeing those numbers go up even higher yet. We, one bright spot on the horizon is tomorrow the FDA will be approving the vaccine. We're not seeing anything that's going to be holding that back. And once that happens, in about three to five days, it'll go out, and then we should start seeing it here in the county, here in about, I would say, probably 10 days or so before they'll start doing any type of allotments out. We do have another vaccine meeting that's coming up on the 22nd, so we'll be able to know more than. We did go live with Pro QA yesterday. We had, for those that don't, aren't aware of what that is, that's basically, it's a, an aid to our dispatch center to help send the right rig to the right response. And that went live, very few glitches so far, so we're real proud of that. And yes, Mayor, I lost my dollar. But other than that, we're, we're busy. We've got one vehicle, one of our ambulants, we've lost the radiator on it, so it's over in the shop now, so we're waiting to get that back. But we're just tracking along.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Dean. Police Chief Lynn Tucker.
All right, just a couple of things. We've been swamped with calls on, after John Diamond's passing from the pawn shop. As you can imagine, there is a ton of stuff in that place, and now there are a lot of people wondering, what do I do now? I've got my rifle in there due to a FFL transfer. What do I do? We have no good answers. We have nobody so far stepping up. We do have contact. I got a number from Christine this morning of a son who, a real son. There's another person who claims to be his son that's in the, in the wind. And I have another guy that's a, says he's a brother. He's shown up and says, I have no idea what to do. So we're still in a little bit in the dark. It's not really our problem, but we are taking people's information just for documentation purposes for them. And we got a lot of questions, but not a lot of answers for them. So we'll keep you posted if anything comes up on that. We've had a couple of reports of people violating the, some of the governor's orders. The mayor got some of that information, passed it on to me. This has been a couple of weeks ago now, but we went and checked and verified that those violations were not in fact happening, and they seem to be clear. But we're keeping an eye on it. As with anything, this, all the rules and all this seem to change regularly, so we're, we're trying to do the best we can to make sure that everybody is staying as safe as possible. That's our, that's our main focus, so we're keeping up with those. And the last thing is personnel. I have still got my four people in training, and they're in their first month of a three-month training, once their boots have hit the ground. I refer to them as my baby police officers. We had a good article in the paper, just came out today, I think. And, you know, the only bad thing about having all of our noobs, as we like to call them, is we gotta have somebody to lead them, and we've got a, we've got some of us old grizzled veterans, and we got a whole bunch of new people, and we're trying to get them to where they can be a little bit more grizzled than, than the little baby fuzz on their cheeks. So we're trying to get them seniored up a little bit and getting them some experience, but it's just a weird time. And I, I've got Joanna running our social media site, and we're just going to start hashtagging anything weird in Seidra Woolley, hashtag #Because2020, and we're just going to leave it at that. And that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. I also want to extend my thanks to, for the education that I know you and your staff are doing. I know as you go out, you receive complaints, and as you go out, you continue to educate people regarding the mandates and what they need to be looking for and what the expectations are. And that's, that's not an easy job to have to do that, but thank you, Lynn, to you and your staff for continuing on with that.
I'll pass that on.
Thank you. Director of Public Works, Mike, Mark Freiberger.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Public Works and Engineering, we're pretty much in the design mode right now. We've got a number of things going on, as I've been reporting, our ADA transition plan. We had the second meeting of our advisory group on the 8th, and that went well. And so we're working towards getting a draft plan out sometime towards the end of the month and, and having a final plan, and of course, in the end of March. And just moving ahead with that, we have TSI designing the SR20, SR9 township intersection. I should be seeing 90% plans on that in the near future. Working towards going to advertisement for that, hopefully in January. We do have a little bit of right-of-way that has come up. We're going to need a couple of approaches modified at the ARCO station, and so we're in discussions with the, the owner of that facility now on, on that. And so that's one little sticking point that may take a little bit of extra time. David's working on the design for the Cascade Trail Phase 2A. That's from Holt Camp to Hogen, and that'll run in front of the new Behavioral Health Center and up to that, that tire limit. We're hoping to have that design completed in 2021 and be ready to go to add late 2022 for construction in 2023 is the way the funding is set up. That may get accelerated a little bit if the funds are available at the local level. We were, as you know, awarded TIB funds for the Wicker Road overlay project that runs from township to the city limits, and we'll begin designing on that later this winter and have that ready to go in the spring for summer of 2021. And we're considering, continuing our design for the new wastewater treatment plant lab ops building. Again, we're hoping to have that one ready to go to advertisement sometime in the early part of 2021 and build that in 2021. We've also, as I've been reporting, been looking at adding on the design and construction of the Public Works Building on a reduced scope, and that's looking fairly promising. I have the estimate from Carletti to add that to their scope of work for the lab ops building and get that designed so that we can bid that along with the lab ops building and build that also next year. And I've been working with Chief, Chief Klinger on the Fire Station 1.5, and unfortunately, we got a preliminary estimate back on that that was well over our, our budget amount, so we've kind of regrouped and are taking another look at that right now. And we'll report more on that later as that develops. We have awarded a fence, fence project for three locations around town, Memorial Park. We're putting a piece of fence around the boundary of the house that's at the southwest corner of Memorial Park. And we're also putting some fencing in on Hauser Park, a portion that we didn't do with the original boundary fence we did a couple of years ago. And then we're also replacing some fence at the northwest corner of the new library site there. So those projects will be happening in the next couple of weeks. We'll be talking about the sewer comp plan a little later in coordination with John's discussion of the Planning Commission docket. And just a heads up for the Utility Committee members, we should be scheduling a meeting in January to talk about a couple of matters. We, in doing the ADU modifications and the updates to the general facilities plan, there's a couple of more things we need to look at and update in our, our code. One is possible of addition of rates for general facilities charges for RV parks. And another one, there's been a request from the development community to look at a possible adjustment and how we look at multifamily. So we'll be bringing that to the Utility Committee. I've already had Katie Isaacson do a study on comparables for the agencies in our vicinity, and we'll use that as a basis for that recommendation to the Utility Committee and then follow up with a presentation to Council, if that is appropriate. So those are the things we have going on right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Director of Building and Permits, John Coleman.
Good evening, Council Mayor. Thank you. So earlier this evening, the Planning Committee of the Council held a, held a meeting and had a good discussion, and I think Councilmember Kestie is going to be giving a roundup on what was discussed at that meeting, following staff presentations. We're looking at skipping this December Planning Commission meeting, giving the Planning Commission a break during the holiday season. So we won't be, won't be having anything for the Planning Commission in December, but we'll be back in action in January with, with Joe Fournette back on the Planning Commission, which we're glad to have. Thank you for passing that motion to keep Joe on the Planning Commission. And then tonight, I've got two topics for you that are going to be fairly complex, and so you'll be hearing from me plenty this evening, so I'll leave it at that.
All right, thank you, John. Director of IT, Bill Chambers.
Well, we completed the email migration, as most of you know. We ran into some anticipated bumps and some, a few unanticipated ones, but we're getting those ironed out, and all in all, it went pretty smoothly. I'm pleasantly surprised. Working on getting some police vehicle, police vehicles outfitted for the new officers and returning officers, and catching up on phones, tablets, MDTs, and accounts for all of them, and also doing our, getting prepared for our annual renewal of our Microsoft enterprise agreement. And that's it.
All right. Thank you, Bill. It's, you have a daunting job when you consider all the desktop computers, laptops, phones, all the devices that you're keeping us using and up and running.
It's sure nice to have Glenn's help. It really is. I appreciate that.
You and both do. You and Glenn do a great job. Thank you. Finance Manager, Jill Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. On Monday, we received the final CARES Fund reimbursement payment from the Department of Commerce, and that was for a little over $429,000. So in total, we received $526,050. And the Department of Commerce was super easy to work with, and I want to thank everyone at the city. We had a lot of projects going on, and everyone just did an incredible job expediting everything to just make sure we could make the deadline we had of not only when we expended the funds, but when we submitted our final reimbursement. So the cutoff was December 15th, and it was actually submitted last week. So thank you to everyone. As the mayor mentioned, Cheryl is retiring, and although I've only had the privilege of working with her for less than a year, I've also appreciated her friendliness, warmth, and helpfulness in so many areas in finance. We are definitely going to miss you, Cheryl. She'll be a tough one to replace, and I want to personally thank her for all the work that she has put in to prepare for her replacement. And I just want to wish you all the best in your retirement. I hope you come back and visit when the city opens up again. Speaking of Cheryl's replacement, the candidate that we hired decided to accept another position, so we're kind of back to the drawing board. We had hoped to have a new candidate in place to overlap with Cheryl so that she could train the new employee, but I am confident with Cheryl's excellent preparation. She just did a great job compiling all of the different tasks that she performs. Of course, you can't replace all of the context and history that she brings to the job, but I, there's a great staff in finance, and I think we'll continue to provide the services that we need to. Thank you, Cheryl. Our phone bill pay system went live on December 1st, and so far, that seems to be working well, and I think that's a great benefit to not only our utility customers, but it also frees up our finance staff to not accept those phone payments. They can just be directed. And of course, if people do need that assistance, we always offer that. So that's all I have to report for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill, and thank you for everything that you do, working with the budget and also doing the CARES Act on top of it. It was a heavy load to carry, but you, you've done a great job. Great to have you on board.
Thank you.
City Supervisor, Doug Merriman.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. I'll just start off with my people, land, and money presentation here. First with people, the Finance Director position today was its closing date for first review. And counting the one that slipped in with one minute to go before the deadline today, we have 12 applications so far for that position. So so far, that's a good number. We'll continue to accept those, but we will start screening the ones we have received so far to make sure that they meet the minimum qualifications. And I'm actually having copies of those made for the mayor for her review to look at those as well. And we'll be moving ahead with that, hopefully getting somebody on board pretty soon here. Jill covered the Accounts Payable position. We do have, like she mentioned, two interviews tomorrow. We'll be continuing forward on that, and hopefully have a good candidate in there soon. Other things going on, kind of under the land category, is the library. If you've driven by there lately, you can see landscaping and things outside the building, and it's getting really close. It's one of those, it's almost like Christmas. We're just waiting for the date so we can open the package. I got to go through the mayor, and I did a walkthrough this week and got to see the inside. We're wrapping up some of the lighting and things inside and going through the punch list to just get the project wrapped up and in its final stage. So we don't have a definite date yet when we'll start moving in and actually getting the doors open to the public. And I'm guessing, Mayor, if I, if I got this right, it might be sometime the first part of January for a full public opening on that. But I think it would be nice at some point, if Council so desired, we can arrange a tour, maybe a pre-opening walkthrough, and we can take a look, and you guys can see how that's really turning out. That would be a good trip to do. So far on that project, we are on budget. We even, I don't want to jinx myself and say we'll come out a little bit ahead, but there is that good possibility. So we're just putting the, wrapping up on that with the Library District. They'll be buying furniture and putting it in. Some of our city staff is helping them with that on bidding and doing those things. So it's a good team effort with a lot of people, and it'll be a nice product when we're done. Couple other things, kind of in the money area. Our Lodging Tax Advisory Committee met this last week, last Wednesday, and we went through and reviewed all the applications that came in for lodging tax funding. And as you know, the city has a grant program where we provide grants to businesses and others if they do advertise or promotion of tourism for us. So we went through those. We had, I'm looking at about nine applications. I think they funded eight for a total of about $30,000. So that'll come to City Council, the first meeting in January, for your review of the recommendation from the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. And then the last item, I've been talking with the state auditors this week. They are wrapping up our 2019 audit, and so I think probably they'll be looking for an exit conference sometime around the second week of January. Even when they wrap up the field work and they're done torturing us here at City Hall, they do send it up to those higher up the level that torture us even some more. So we're getting close to having that part done and getting a report back to you on that. So just lots of other things going on, but it's been a good year so far. I do want to join in also and thank Cheryl. I know when I came to work here, I would spend two or three days, if you can believe it, was pulling my hair out, trying to figure out our bias system and doing all of that. And I soon learned it would be one quick trip to Cheryl's office and say, how do I do this? In three clicks, she'd have me there. So it was really good to have Cheryl and her knowledge and her skills and her willingness to help me when I came in. I'd be willing to bet there, someone might beat her, but I think if we did a poll and a contest to see who's attended the most council meetings, I think Cheryl might be pretty close to winning that one. But I just want to say thank you, Cheryl, very much for your work. Everybody has loved working with you, and you will truly be missed here. And that's the end of my report.
All right, thank you, Doug. And last but not least, our City Attorney, Nikki Thompson.
Good afternoon. Lately, I've been doing a lot of work behind the scenes on things like code enforcement and property transactions. I've been doing some work with the mayor and with Doug on possible code changes that might come before you all in a few months, and that's been really fun. And then working on public records requests. We've had some big ones lately that I've been assisting on. Beyond that, there's probably nothing of interest to the group, and you're going to hear me talk later.
Thank you, Nikki. You are greatly appreciated. I don't think the Council, we, it's, it's hard to convey how much we really rely on you and how we greatly respect the knowledge and the direction that you often provide for us. So thank you, Nikki. Moving on to Council reports, I'll begin with Councilman Allen.
Hello, Mayor. I would like to thank Cheryl. And just being a small-town boy, I remember her dad, Joe, and her mom, Bob, and her brother, Joey, and I graduated with their sister, Bonnie, and we go back a couple weeks. She's younger than me, but anyway, Cheryl, just best of luck with you, and I'm, I'm glad to see you retire. I mean, for the good reason. So anyway, enjoy your retirement, okay?
Thank you, Glenn. Councilman DeYoung.
Thank you, Mayor. I also would like to convey best of luck and all the thanks in the world to our clerk, Cheryl Brew. I appreciated your consistency at the helm. Have I lost you?
No, I hear you. I hear you.
All right. It looks like my Zoom just went out. So if you can still hear me. So thank you for your longtime service to the city, and I wish all the happiness for you and Greg in retirement. Also, I believe this is our final meeting for the year, so I just wanted to wish everyone happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Festival of Lights for Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, and however you celebrate the season with your family and friends. Looks like I popped back up. So a good time in Word 6 for that. And then, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to bring up a point about the vacancy appointment. It seems like, well, it is noted on our website that the 18th is the final day to turn in applications. And there's been some discussion about having a full council, since we're not at a full council yet, to discuss the budget. And the budget is mandated to be due and finalized by the end of this month, and we don't have another meeting scheduled from the closing date of the application process, which is the 18th, to when the budget must be finalized. And I just wanted to proffer out there, is this a good time to think about a special meeting the week of the 20th or 27th in order to get full representation from the council for budget consideration? So I just wanted to put that out for discussion. Thank you.
I don't know if anybody wants to discuss it. I can say that we do have a quorum here. We do have enough people to take a vote on the budget. Putting it out, doing a special meeting, I don't know if we really have a quorum if we did that, given people's schedules. And also, we have notified those applicants who have already submitted that we are going to be reviewing it. I believe it's on the 6th. I have that information here. So we're going to be reviewing it on the 6th. So that's what they are anticipating, and we've already heard back from some of them regarding special circumstances. So are there any thoughts on that, or is the council okay with moving forward with it on the 6th? Okay, hearing none, I guess. Does that answer your question, Mr. DeYoung?
I see Brandon has gone off mute.
I was gonna say something, Madam Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
I also would like to see a full quorum, and I'm available if we do decide to do another meeting. But I understand if we've already committed to the people that have applied, we kind of have our hands tied. But I would echo Councilman DeYoung that I would like to see a full council vote on the budget. But I understand where we're at with other people.
So is there anyone else?
This is Councilmember Kestee. I'm okay with going through with it tonight.
All right. Well, is there anyone else who wants to make a comment? Mr. Owen?
No, I think you've notified everybody already. So I guess we've got enough for quorum to.
Yeah, I would hate to muddy the waters, and I would hate for somebody to actually miss the interview for one reason or another. So it's been in the paper, it's on our website. I would really like to stay the course. So unless somebody has a huge objection.
Councilwoman Kinser here?
Go ahead, Brenda.
I'm sorry, I'm really, really glitching tonight on the Zoom. I think since all the notifications and everything have already gone out, that we should stick with the original schedule.
All right. Thank you. So I have three that have spoken in continuation of, and two that would be open to a special meeting. Glenn, I guess you would be the other person who would have some, you have, do you have one opinion or another?
Basically, at this time, no.
All right. So looks like we're going to move forward with what we have.
Listening and taking it up for consideration. That's all I was asking for. Thank you.
You're welcome. So moving on to Councilwoman Kestee.
All right. Did it hit unmute?
Yes, it did. We can hear you.
Okay, forgive me. It's, I'm having technical difficulties over here. But thank you. First off, I'd like to say congratulations to Cheryl on her well-deserved retirement, and I wish you well, Cheryl. And like John mentioned, tonight, we had a planning committee meeting. We discussed whether or not we would like to revisit the issue of allowing electronic boards in certain areas of the Central Business District. We discussed the issue at length, and we decided to recommend to the full council that we send the issue back to the Planning Commission to study and bring back changes for the council to consider. John, would you like to add anything before I make a motion?
No, I don't know if the council has a lot of background on the issue. The Planning Committee was looking at whether or not we should allow a certain amount of reader boards, electronic reader boards in the Central Business District. Right now, they're not allowed. So that was the issue that the committee took up today.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion that the council direct the Planning Commission to study and update current policies and regulations on electronic reader boards in the Central Business District.
Thank you, Council.
Councilmember Kinser, I second that.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Kestee, seconded by Councilwoman Kinser, to put place before, put before the Planning Commission a review of the reader boards. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Very nice. Okay, thank you, Joelle. Anything else you would like to report on tonight?
That's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilwoman Kinser.
Again, I apologize for the Zoom issues I'm having tonight. It seems that I can't stay on video and be able to mute and unmute in a timely manner. So I'm staying off video for now because it seems to make things happen more quickly. Again, I'd like to thank Nathan and his crew for going up and cleaning the cemetery. I got to look it over in detail last weekend, and you can barely see any of the graffiti up there anymore. It really looks good. Really appreciate what they did. And that's all I, well, happy holidays, everybody. And oh, yes, Cheryl, of course. Thank you for everything you've done for our city. I really, we all really appreciate you, and we really wish you the best.
All right. Thank you, Brenda. Councilman McGough.
I thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to also thank Cheryl for her service, and I wish you the best moving forward. And I'd also like to thank everyone who helped put up the Christmas tree and the decorations downtown. They look really good, and it really brings the festive feel. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Councilman Owen?
Yes, all I can say is Cheryl O'Gall, happy trails to you. And you're going to really be missed, especially by me, because anytime I had problems, I always went and talked with you. You had a way of making a person feel better. So I know, I know your dad real well. He tailored my first suit. He was a great guy. So you have a wonderful family. You have a wonderful, wonderful retirement, and I'll catch you next spring in the flower bed. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Chuck. I have just a few items. First off, I have, I actually wrote letters to our legislators regarding the funding of social workers for our law enforcement. That's one thing that we're hearing over and over again in all the cities, and even in our own city, with the increase in mental health, the overdoses, the increase in crime. It's, it's nice to have, I think what our officers have experienced, is that it's nice to have a social worker who can actually address some of those issues that deal with mental health. Our officers have excellent training, and they are highly qualified in their field, but they are not social workers, and they are not counselors. And so to help them and their jobs so they can do their job better, I have written letters to our legislators, asking them if they won't put, won't put before the legislature funding for cities to help bring in social workers. I did hear back from Representative Eslic, and she is very much for it. And she is actually on the Mental Health Committee this year. She's also on the Transportation Committee, which is going to be helpful for us, especially if they move forward with the transportation package. So I'm kind of excited about that, and I really hope that there's something that comes about regarding that. We do need that extra help. Every city does. I've also, I'm going to be getting together with all the directors soon. We're going to be talking about our legislature legislative objectives. We definitely are looking forward to talking about our plans for the East Jones John Liner. So transportation is huge and important. Mental health is another one that we're going to be discussing. And so we're, I'll just hear what the directors have to say and what it is that we're going to be pursuing when we head down. Well, I guess we won't be heading down when we zoom in to Olympia. You had mentioned the application period, and so the application period for the Sejuwuli City at Large position, it was extended to 4:30 December 18th. That's, you have to have your applications in before 4:30 on the 18th of this month. January 6th will be the date when we will be doing the interview for qualified candidates and selecting our new member. Applicants are, they must reside in Sejuwuli for at least a year and be registered voters. So that's what we're looking for, just FYI. It was kind of nice having the opportunity to extend it because we went from a couple of applications to I think we have like eight or nine now. So it's, I think it's going to be a good option for you, for the council, to make. You'll have good selections come January 6th. And then also, I had received a memo from Jim Taylor, who is the Skagit Trail Builders Director. And he just said that they are, they've been asking their volunteers that if they are sick or feeling unwell, to not show up for the next scheduled trail building. And they are looking for alternates, and they need people who, who would be willing to be on call so that if they do not have enough volunteers, they can call on you to come and help with both the upcoming session and also the January 9th session. And Jim said if you have any questions or would like some more information, you can email him at JT@skagittrailbuilders.org. So that's all I have for that, and we will move on to public comments.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman.
May I just comment on something quickly?
Yes.
Thank you very much for the letters you sent for social workers in regards to addiction and mental health. As most people know, I do work in addiction and mental health, and we all know that there is such a tremendous, great need for boots on the ground in that area. And so I really appreciate the work that you're doing to try to move forward on those things.
Thank you, Brenda. I appreciate that. And I, you're doing great work as well, and I know it's not easy. But thank you for choosing that field and dedicating your time and energies to that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So it is 6:43, and I'm going to open up public comment. Please keep your comments to three minutes, and I would ask that you give your name and address. If you are wanting to speak on the appeal of the, the appeal of the hearing examiner's decision, which we're going to be discussing next, please hold your comments for that, because you will have opportunity to, I think, comment at that point. Is that correct, John? I want to make sure that's correct. They'll have opportunity to do that.
Well, Nikki, maybe you should weigh in on the, on how that's going to work. It's, it's a closed hearing, so it's not going to have.
That is correct.
Okay. So, well, then, Nikki, would it be all right then if they wanted to say something during the public comment? Can they, or would that not be acceptable? I mean, this is really, I don't think we've done one of these since 2011, so I'm not really sure what our procedures are here.
So there isn't actually an ability to weigh in at this point. The record is closed. The time to do that was during the open comment period, and that's, that's over and done with now. What happens tonight is a closed record review of the record that was created below, and debate by the council and a decision. There's not going to be any, any comment.
All right. Thank you, Nikki. I appreciate that. So getting back to public comments, then, I will open it up if you have a comment that you would like to make before the council. Okay, hearing none at 6:45. I'm going to close public comment, and we are going to jump, as promised, jump right into the, the appeal, the hearing examiner's decision on ZV 2020-052 and SP 2020-053. This is Holdings of the Short Platten, the variant. So Nikki, will you be taking this?
So I will take the first part because since this is a quasi judicial matter, we do need to run through the appearance of fairness colloquy. So I will run through that with the council, and then John is going to give a brief staff presentation, and then council will go ahead and deliberate after that. So I need to ask you all some questions before we begin to make sure that the appearance of fairness doctrine does not require any member to refrain from deciding this matter. So does any member of this council have knowledge of or have conducted business with either the proponents or the opponents of this particular appeal?
No.
Does any member of this council either have a pecuniary or non pecuniary interest in the outcome of this proceeding?
No.
Does any member of this council know whether or not their employer has a financial interest in the property or area which will be impacted by the decision in this proceeding? Seeing none. Does any member of this council live or own property within 300 feet of the area which will be impacted by the decision in this proceeding? Seeing none. Does any member of this council have any special knowledge about the substance of the merits of this proceeding, which would or could cause the council member to prejudge the outcome of this proceeding? Seeing none. Is there any member of this council who believes that he or she cannot sit and hear this matter fairly and impartially, both as to the respective positions of the proponents and the opponents in this proceedings? Seeing none. Has any council member had any ex parte communications with either the proponents or the opponents of this particular proceeding? Seeing none. Mayor, I have finished the colloquy, and I will turn it over to John for a brief staff presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Okay. So this is John Coleman. I'm the planning director, and I'm going to give just a brief presentation on what the project is and what, and how we got here. So I'm going to share my screen here so I can show a very, very basic view of. very basic view of Are you seeing a my screen here with a yellow drawing of a map?
It appears on my screen, John.
Okay. So sorry for the crudeness of this map. This is just a very quick way of explaining what was going on. So the property owner, which is Iverson Holdings LLC, represented by John Covermo, requested a short plat of property on Ball Street. The property has two existing single family homes on it already, which is not typical to have more than one house on a single piece of land. And so the, the request is for a short plat and that would create a separate lot for each of the two single family homes. And those are located close to the road. On the left side of the street is Ball Street. Those homes are located close to the street and fairly close to each other. It's a large lot, so there's also enough room in the back of the property for a third lot. And that third lot is large enough and meets zoning requirements to be allowed a duplex. But normally this would be an administrative issue and would not have gone to the hearing examiner for any decisions, except for because the houses are close together, there's the, the, there were some oddities just in being able to draw the lines and meet the normal setbacks and accommodate. I don't know if you can see along southern property line is a twenty foot ingress and egress, basically a driveway for the lot in back. And because the city has a rule that says ingress and egress access easements don't count towards the lot size. The applicant had to request a variance so that from, from the, from the lot size to, in order for the short plat to happen as, as drawn. Now, lot two here, the one that has the easement across it is still, still seventy seven hundred square feet plus. And so without the easement, it's much larger than six thousand square feet, which would be the typical minimum lot size. But because of that easement, not counting towards the lot size, it comes in a little bit smaller than six thousand square feet at four thousand six hundred fifty-five square feet. And thus it was required to go to the hearing examiner for a variance along with the short plat. The hearing examiner held the public hearing. There were several, there was, there was comments both for and against the proposal. All of the hearing examiner's information that was presented to him, the letters that were submitted and, and comments that were submitted are all in the record that you received today. The hearing examiner approved the short plat with the variance. So it looked basically like what you see on the screen right now. Apologize for the crude drawing. I just used the PDF drawer function to draw the colored lines on there to make it much easier for the council and the public at large to see what the three lots would look like. So I apologize for the, for the low, low resolution quality of it. And as with any hearing examiner decision, there is an appeal period. There was an appeal received in a timely manner. That appeal is included in your council packet. And the way an appeal is, when it comes to the council is, it's a closed record appeal. So what we're going to be reviewing is the appeal itself. You'll be reviewing those issues to make sure that that's what you'll be basing it on. So the, the appeal states that, you know, that the the, the hearing examiner made a decision in error and gives, gives their reasons why they think it was an error. And then it is up to the council to review and make a decision. This is not a two read issue. This is something that the council does need to decide in a timely fashion. Are there any the thing else that I should add Nikki, as far as the procedure?
No, at, at this juncture, you can turn it over to council and allow them to review the record below them and discuss the record amongst themselves. And come to one of the conclusions that have, that you've listed on your staff report.
And the recommended possible actions are found on page three thirteen for all of you to take a look at. So we will open this up to the council. As I stated earlier, this is, this is a very rare occurrence to come before the council. I think it was twenty eleven, the last time this did come before the council. So it's all new to us. But we are going to open this up for discussion. Are there questions or comments that council members would like to make?
Madam Mayor.
Councilman DeYoung, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that the easement was approved with two, two of those conditions. And is that where we're, we're standing to reaffirm or deny tonight?
Yeah. So are you reading the summary of the decision? Under the summary of the decision, it talks about the, the size of the lots. It says here, the request for the short plot to subdivide an approximately point six two acre lot into three separate residential lots and for zoning variances to reduce the lot within reduce a lot width from two front lots and reduces the minimum lot size for one of the front lots to allow for the shared access easement at five twenty-three Ball Street is approved. Conditions are necessary to address specific impacts of the proposed project. So are there questions actually that you could, are we allowed, Nikki, are the, are the council allowed to ask you questions regarding this?
There's two conditions with this, right? Providing a maintenance agreement for the shared driveway and construct parking spaces. Is that correct?
According to the summary.
Great, thank you.
That was, are you reading the summary? The summary is on three fourteen.
So this is John. If you'd like, I could weigh in. So the hearing examiner approved it with two conditions. I believe the, the two conditions that council member DeYoung were speaking of are to provide a maintenance agreement for the shared driveway that serves lots two and three and construct parking spaces that meet Sejuulie Development Regulations. Those are just kind of standard, nothing unusual. Just stating the obvious to be clear. The, the hearing examiner decision approved the short plat as substantively shown in the map that I presented earlier. So the, the question is, you know, about the appeal.
Council have any comments or questions regarding the appeal?
Madam Mayor, may I make a motion?
Yes, you may.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve zoning variance number two oh two dash zero five two and short plat number two oh two dash zero five three is subject to the following conditions. Number one, providing maintenance agreement for the shared driveway that serves lot two and three to be reviewed and approved with final plat. And number two, construct parking spaces that meet Sejuulie Development Regulations on proposed lots one and two before final short plat approval.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kinser. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Allen, I'll second that.
Is there any discussion, any more discussion regarding this? Okay, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Okay, so passes. So I don't know, John. Is there something more that we need to do here?
I think inherent in that motion was an affirmation of the hearing examiner's decision and a denial of the appeal.
Yep. Okay, so we will move on. We are moving now into a public hearing. So placed in the paper was a notice of a public hearing for the proposed twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two biennial budget for Sejuulie City Council to hold a public hearing at six PM, which we are doing to discuss the budget. So citizens were encouraged to either attend or submit written comments to Doug Merriman before today. And Mr. Merriman, I don't know if you received any comments or not.
I have not received any comments.
Okay, but I will open this up. It is seven PM. So I will open up this public hearing and I ask that you give your name and your address. And keep your comments to about three minutes. Is there anybody who would like to make public comment?
Madam Mayor.
Are you going to make a public, public hearing comment?
Me?
Why don't we wait till after the hearing?
Yeah.
So I, I don't hear any. So having heard none at seven oh one, I am going to close the public hearing for the proposed twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two biennial budget. So Councilman Owen, did you have a comment?
Well, I was just going to talk about the budget. I had some one item that I'm opposed to is the, the building down at the solid waste. I think they could do a building there for, that would house the equipment and a place for the mechanic to work a lot cheaper than what it's budgeted. I mean, the times we got ahead, we don't know. And, and we have a lot of outstanding contracts. So I think that they could put up something like a, like a pole building to house their, their equipment and a place for the mechanic for, for at least probably around a million dollars. And that's way under what they've got budgeted. So no, I, I'm opposed to that. And I, I think they don't need a Taj Mahal for their equipment and stuff. They just need some shelter. And that's way down out of the way. It ain't no eyesore for the city. And I'm opposed to, to the, to the budget they've got for that building. I'm sure, I'm sure that they could put up something cheaper. So that's all I got to say. That's the only thing I'm opposed to in the budget.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Owen. I'm going to actually turn this over to Doug Merriman to see if he would like to add any comments regarding the budget.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to put a slide up on the screen real quick. And can you see the slide up there?
Yes.
Okay, I see some head nods. Thank you. So what I'm going to do is just give a real quick rundown of what we have. I'm looking for my advanced slide button that is not working. Well, that's never fun. So the good thing I have a good memory. So I'm going to pop this back out of here.
Does the tab button work?
Yeah, I was trying that. But it paid. I beg your indulgence one more time. We'll see if this works. Okay. It's those gremlins getting my slides again. So what I'll do is I'll just walk down this. We have the key thing is this is our first biennial budget and congratulations. That was a big effort on everybody's part this year. It's the first time the city's done a two-year budget and council was gracious and passing that ordinance this year. And the mayor and council and all staff rolled right with it. It was pretty seamless this year. A little bit different doing two years in a row like that. So I just want to thank everybody and I appreciate all that work. So what we've done so far this year on this budget, we did hold a public hearing, number one. This is the first of three where we talked about our projected revenues and estimated cash balances. We had a second public hearing that was on the preliminary budget and staff gave comments about their operations for the next two years. And then tonight would be our third and final public hearing that we just held. And that's for final adoption of the budget. And earlier we were talking about the requirement of when the budget needs to be passed. And for those of you that just love reading RCWs, I can give you that site. But that's RCW thirty-five A dot thirty-three dot zero seven five. And that basically says that a budget is required to be adopted prior to the beginning of the fiscal year. Or by the end of the year. It's basically what it comes down to. So some of the budget highlights, we've talked about some of these. The mayor has spoken about community court. This is a new program that we've put into the budget this year. It's for a total of nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. It's a small amount of the total budget, but it's a great program. And our judge is working to set this up and we will be doing, it's a new alternative for nonviolent misdemeanor crimes. Instead of running it all the way through, we do provide a special time to address those issues. And we will have like public health and others there that can actually work with those people right away. There are public services being provided at community court. So that'll be an interesting approach to that and probably helpful for those nonviolent type offenders that we see. As far as the budget overall, operationally, it's a little boring. We have the same things that we've been doing. We're trying to be a little bit cautious this year because of COVID. And just kind of played a little bit safe, just not knowing how revenues are going to continue to be impacted. But we do have the operational costs like salaries, benefits, equipment and vehicle costs are all in place now for the four new police officers that came about as a result of Proposition One. And as Chief Tucker mentioned earlier, we have our new crew out there and they'll be going into their field training. The FTO program, we call it, and getting them up there. So I think just on behalf of everybody, I'd like to thank the mayor and council for supporting Proposition One and the citizens of Sejuulie as well. Because without that support and that effort, we wouldn't have been able to provide that additional security that we're doing. Other things we have going on, studies, we have just a couple of studies going. One is a park master plan. And Mark is getting this one budgeted in his area. I will be looking at the level of service and what that means to those who might be listening. A level of service could be the city has a goal of having so many acres of parks per thousands of citizens that we have in the city. So it's just a, a quick example, but it's looking at our parks and what our needs are and going forward with that. We have thirty-two thousand dollars set aside for that process. Mark is also working on an ADA transition plan. And this, what this does is assess, is the And this, what this does is assess, is the accessibility to parks for disabled persons. So we have a couple of items going there that'll be helpful in that area. While I'm on parks, we also have $50,000 budgeted for the renovation of Memorial Park. There's some needed improvements that we have there. Just quickly, a couple of other things. We're still doing our streets and arterial maintenance program. We have about $263,000 budgeted for that. There's 150,000 in street improvements. That's primarily overlays. And then we have $113,000 in the arterial funds. Other capital improvements, we have, there's 706,000 capital funding. We have 3.1 million. And 962,000 respectively in 2021 and 2022. And those are sewer system infrastructure upgrades. So we'll have some engineering and design work and then the replacement of the city's laboratory operations building. And that's a much needed change. I don't know how many of you know that some of that building is right over the top of. Containment thing that holds affluent, which is not great stuff when your office is right up above it. So that causes some issues in the building down there sometimes. So it'll be nice to get that one cleaned up. And then the last item I have on the highlights is we're budgeting again $7,500 for eDesk. And that is to do economic development and business growth and job creation work for the city of Sido Woolly. That's kind of an ongoing contract we've had with them. I had some really pretty graphs that probably aren't shown, but what I think what I'm going to do is I'll just pop one up here real quick. If you can see it, this shows the 2021 revenues and it's kind of a typical graph for the city. As you can see, the lower portion is charges for services. This is mainly utility rates and say development fees and things that we charge for direct city services. A lot of times, city services are funded by taxes. And other times, specific type of work we do for an individual or a company, they'll get charged directly for that. So you can see that's 23% of our budget is the main part. Up in about 2 o'clock on that graph, you could see taxes are about 20%. So you can kind of see the split we do. There's a lot of discussions out in finance circles. About allocating the cost to government and you can see how that is done here. Other items in our revenues, transfers are internal transfers. So we have some of like our sewer reserve fund is transferring $2 million to the sewer operations fund. For the capital improvement projects we talked about. That's just one example. So this pie chart shows you a little bit of where our main funding sources come from. What's kind of critical is one at the top, beginning cash. We talked over the last couple of years about trying to bump our, our minimum fund balance up. We've been running about 8% of a year's expenses. The best practices number that's put out by the Government Finance Officers Association is 16%. While this chart shows 27%, that is all funds. So that is a little higher because we have certain funds that all they do is hold money because it's restricted money. But what we are really concerned about is operating funds like the general fund, our parks fund and our utilities. That their specific individual cash balances run at 16%. We've gone from 8% to about 10% this year. So we're slowly just biting that. Elephant in the middle of the room, a bite at a time. And hopefully we'll get to that 16% mark by the end of this biennium. Because what I'll do is at the end of each year, whatever's left over in the budget that hasn't been spent, it goes right back into our reserves. So we'll just continue to do that until we can get that up to where council had directed. So I'm going to go ahead and drop this slide back off. And I'll just take it quickly. I'll have to just do this one slide at a time. Okay, and you should see our expenses now. And I'll just do 2021, 2022 is almost a mirror image of it. Except for some capital improvements and things just slightly different. But for expenditures, the primary areas, look on the left, this orange slice at about nine o'clock on that pie chart. Shows salaries and wages is about 20% of our budget. You can see benefits runs just under seven. We have services. Capital outlays in 2021 is about 13% of our budget. You could see transfers and it should be pretty close to the revenues because if it's transferring out somewhere, it's transferring in somewhere else. Those are internal transfers. So when we look at those charts, those numbers in dollar amounts should always be the same. And the one I want to point out is at the bottom, ending cash reserves. Again, that one is at 23%. It's higher than that 16%. But one of the things I watched is when we went from the beginning of 2021 to the end of 2022. I see that cash reserve balance going up and that's a really good sign. Basically, we balanced both years to be cash flow neutral. So we're not using reserves to do any of our operations over the next two years. That's just a good sign for us to be in. And that was from a lot of hard work from everybody. So just to kind of wrap these items up, the budget summary, like I said, everything's balanced. We survived our biennial budget and going through that process. But I do have to let you know, this was a really tight budget. We had some real sharp pencils and we had to go back three or four times on some areas, mainly because COVID. While our taxes like sales tax and those things are running fine. Our facilities are closed. And so in our parks and facilities fund. We aren't getting the rental income, like say from the campground or from, you know, our community center. And those were pretty big funding sources for what we do in our parks. So we've had to really look at that with Nathan and come up with a plan there. Hopefully, we'll get to a point, maybe this next year, where we're open again. I mean, everybody's hoping for that. And then that'll kind of relieve that budget pressure. But we are being cautious and making sure that we monitor that appropriately. One thing I did want to add is we talked about a capital facilities plan. We have one to a certain degree with our utilities. What that plan does, it requires in the area of our utilities. Our parks, fire and police and other areas that we do a six-year plan. And what it is, is we list out all of our capital projects and things that we're doing. And that has to have an equal amount of funding for all six years. In the past, we've had a one-year budget and done that one year at a time. What we'll be doing with the CFP or capital facilities plan is going six years. Our, our transportation plan, our tip, as we call it, is six years. So what we're doing now is getting a strategic alignment of all our planning documents. So when we get those put together and approved. Then when you do a biennial budget, a two-year budget, you will go to those documents and adopt the first two years. So it gets you that. Alignment between all your documents, all your decision-making and all your strategies. And that's been the whole goal of this biennial budget. And then this year we'll be doing the capital facilities plan. So I just wanted to point that out to you. That was one that Mayor Johnson has really been talking about. It is in her budget message. And we're well on our way to accomplishing that this year. So for today, we, we had two requirements we needed to do today. One was hold a public hearing and we have done that. And then what I am looking for is a motion to adopt ordinance number 1970 dash 20 for our 2021-2022 biennial budget. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Doug. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Merriman? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to adopt our ordinance 1970-20? The biennial budget for the city of Sido Woolly for years 2021-2022.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Allen, I will make that motion to adopt 2021-2022.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there a second?
Go ahead, Brendan.
Okay, either way, Councilman McGough, can I second?
All right. Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Allen and seconded by Councilman McGoughan. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. Moving on to our new unfinished business, which has, happens to do with ordinance 1971-20. The 2021-2022, well, the 2021 salary ordinance. So Doug, I believe you're back on.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance is our annual salary ordinance. The city of Sido Woolly's practice has been to adopt an ordinance each year that goes hand in hand with the budget. Some cities will put their salary table in the budget and adopt it that way. So there are a number of different ways. No one of them is perfect or required, but it's, it's a good thing to put this in. Our city code does require certain positions like our municipal court judge, that salary to be adopted by ordinance. And if you've followed this ordinance over the years, I did add that one in this year. I found that in the code this last year and talked to Brock and make sure we had that in there. So this salary ordinance is for nonrepresented individuals. I do have one correction. Sharper eyes than mine found a title error. And there we have a. My job, actually. I am not the city attorney. So I need to strike that. I did miss that. I am just the city administrator and Nikki, you don't have to be afraid. I'm not wanting to be the city attorney. So I just want to make sure that if we make a motion on this, that we do make a motion to adopt it with that correction made. So I can answer any questions there. This ordinance does include a 2% cost of living adjustment. It, and I believe I included some information on that. It is the same that we're doing for our bargaining units. Or will be, as we discussed that a little bit later in this meeting. But I can answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Merriman?
Oh, Madam Mayor, I have one.
Yes. Go ahead, Councilman McGoughan.
Thank you. Doug, could you talk a little bit about the salary survey for nonrepresented employees that was done in 2016? And is that something that we should look at doing every five or six years?
Sure, I can talk to that. Back in 2016, 2017, the city of Sido Woolly did a salary survey. And it might have been, it was nonrepresented. There may have been some work done with one of the bargaining units as well. But what a salary survey does, it is a comprehensive look at, starting at job descriptions of individuals. Making sure they're correct and then taking those job descriptions and comparing those to similar positions in other cities. Typically, a city will have a number of what they call comparable cities. And that list will be derived by looking at population, possibly tax income. It could be if it's a full moon and how far they are from the mountains. There's a lot of different ways that we can look at that to see. What are actually appropriate cities to be compared to. Sido Woolly has typically looked at those that are similar in population or location. You try not to have too many in the Seattle area and you try not to have too many that are up in Okanagan somewhere. Because you want the cities to be somewhat homogeneous. So what you do then is go into. Your comparable cities, list out all your positions and then what they are paid at all these other cities as well. Because you want to, what our practice is, is to get an average and then pay to that average. We don't want to be at the top. We don't want to be at the bottom. So then what you do is it's similar to like union negotiations. When you do a contract, you'll do a salary survey and look at the other unions around. Set the salaries to that. And then you might go three years on that union contract where you do cost of living adjustments. And the purpose of those adjustments then are to keep pace with other cities and to keep pace with inflation. Well, every once in a while, you have to go in and recalibrate and make sure that you actually are keeping pace. So with the salary survey, you will do one at one year and you might go a number of years. But it's wise to come back, update those job descriptions for any changes. And then also look at it again to see where are you at compared to other cities. Things change out there. So some cities, I know that previous city I worked with, our goal is to do one for nonrepresented individuals every five years. Sometimes that would slide a little bit, just depending on workload. But you do want to come back and make sure you're recalibrating that to make sure your salary schedule is fair. It's a good use of taxpayer dollars and also that it's comparable with other cities. Because when we have to hire for positions, you do have to recruit and we're competing against them. So those are all different things. But it's advisable, Brenda, to answer your question, to come back, you know, every so often, every so many years and do that review again.
Thank you, Doug. That's very helpful. Madam Mary, can I just have a suggestion to the council?
Yes.
I'd like to pursue kind of Doug's recommendation that we look into doing this soon. I know we just passed our budget. And Doug, can you give a quick cost estimate of what this would take for just the nonrepresented employees?
Yeah, um, the city used a gentleman named Ross Audrey. Some of you may remember Ross. I had worked with him probably 10 years ago on a similar item. If you do the full-blown comprehensive, look at everybody's job description and you have a lot of people, that can run you 20 to $25,000. That can be a little pricey. If you're looking at just the nonrepresentative, you have say a dozen or 18 people. If you have an HR function or someone assigned, you can actually do that in-house. Or actually, I think I would recommend going out and doing a request for a proposal. And seeing if there are some of the local HR consultants that would be interested in coming in and doing maybe a smaller scale one just for a nonrepresented. I'm not sure what that price would be, but I wouldn't be surprised if you could get that for half of Mr. Audrey's cost.
Right.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Kinser.
Oh, I'm sorry. I interrupted. Go ahead, Madam Mayor.
No, I just wanted to note that we, we're going to make a note of that, that, that. Pursuing the, going out and doing a comprehensive review of the salaries. Is something that we will be looking at within the next year or two. Does that work for you, Councilman McGoughman? If we do it within 2021 or 2022 within our biennial budget?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Yes, Councilwoman Kinser.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1971 dash 20. An ordinance establishing the salaries and wages for elected officials and employees of the city of Sido Woolly, Washington. For the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2021.
Can you also add that we will be, and that we'll be striking the title of city attorney under the city supervisor position?
And we will be striking the title of city attorney under the city supervisor position.
All right. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Go ahead, Chuck.
I'll say it.
All right. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I did not know a motion was going to come so quickly. So I had further discussion. Is this appropriate?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much. So this is a 2%. Doug, is this a 2% bump? Is what we're looking at? Okay, so I just, also that is tied to the mayor's salary, correct, under municipal code 2.02.01? Oh, yes. Looks about the mayor shall be paid an annual salary of $28,953 annually. And that it will be adjusted with the cost of living consistent with those of the nonrepresented employees. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're going to adjust that salary about $500 for the year. So I just wanted to make sure that I have my math right for the 2%.
Yeah, I believe so, yes.
All right. And that was my question. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so we had a motion by Councilwoman Kinser, seconded by Councilman Owen. All those in favor. Of making a motion to adopt ordinance 1971-20 and ordinance establishing the salaries and the wages of elected officials and employees at the city of Sido Woolly. and ordinance establishing the salaries and the wages of elected officials and employees at the city of Cedar Woolley for fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-one, and striking title of city attorney under city supervisor position? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries, thank you. Moving on to ordinance nineteen seventy-two twenty, the amendment to the twenty twenty annual budget. Mr. Merriman.
All right, thank you again, Mayor. So this ordinance, we're going to shift to the year twenty twenty now. So what we do towards the end of the fiscal year is I go back through everything on our books and look for any amendments to our budget we need to do. Typically, there aren't many by this time of year, but I've had a plan for this last year. When I came to work at Cedar Woolley, I noticed there were a few items, like housekeeping items, to get our accounting records into compliance with how the state auditors like to see them. It was nothing major, the state auditors have this habit of making changes to the BARS system. That's the BARS, it's our budget, accounting, and reporting system that we use. And they don't tell you, you have to go hunt it down and find it on their website. So what I've been doing is hunting and finding, and what I'm doing now is, a lot of these things you can't adjust until the end of the year. You need to have final numbers. So most of these are housekeeping, so I've got a pretty good list. Just if you're interested, I went and put a paragraph on, in your agenda packet for each item, so you can tell kind of what it is we're doing. There are only a couple that are really about money, about increasing budget authority. Item number five on page forty-nine, this is about the CARES grant funding. Because we were spending some money, if you ever get a chance to come back in City Hall, you'll notice some changes, we have screens up now at our public counters and different things like that. So what I'm doing is budgeting for the CARES grant money that we have coming in, that's covering the reimbursement for those expenses. So those are really, about the only one that's really about money. We're cleaning up or closing some funds that the city hasn't used in years, and just some different things there. So this will have our budget for the year matching and lining up quite well. And so I have put the new ordinance in place, and that'll be our new appropriation levels for the year twenty twenty. So the recommended action tonight is for you to make a motion to adopt ordinance nineteen seventy-two dash twenty, and I can answer any questions you might have.
Madam Mayor.
Are comments for Doug?
Madam Mayor, I, just a procedural question, and might be because this is all new and zoomy, but I see that there's a hand raised by someone in the public, and I saw some, someone who seems to be rather passionate about a subject. And I know the public comment is gone, but I was just wondering if you could go over the procedure a little bit about, I see that there's a hand raised. And just acknowledging that.
Thank you.
I don't, I guess I don't see a hand raised.
Okay, it's under, and if I, if I misspell, if I mispronounce your name, I'm so sorry. It looks like Ms. Debbie there, Velovich.
Velisich, thank you.
I'm so sorry.
Well, so we have already passed the public comment period, and I could make an exception to the rule if you would like to say, keep it under three minutes. Can you give your name and address and keep it under three minutes?
My name is, excuse me, my name is Debbie Velisich. I live up on Grip Road here in Cedar Woolley. This is all new to me, thank you for letting me make a quick comment. I don't know how these things work, this is the first time I've sat in on a meeting. But I am dismayed to hear that the city council is giving themselves a cost of living raise. I, I'm, I live on eight hundred dollars a month. And it's, it's difficult. And I just, during a time that we're dealing with a pandemic, when people are losing their jobs, when businesses are shutting down, and you guys are giving yourselves a raise? I, I'm just, I'm, I'm dismayed. I mean, I thought, I thought Cedar Woolley was different. I thought this was a small town, I care about your neighbor, care about the people. So, um, I know that you don't have to respond to this, and, and that you've given me the opportunity to, to say this. So there are people out here that are struggling. And it disappoints me, it disappoints me to see that you guys are doing this.
I can weigh in on what the law says about that, if you'd like.
Go ahead.
So actually, the law does not allow the council to give themselves raises, and that's not actually what they've done this evening. A sitting council cannot give itself a raise. Any raise that a sitting council passed would not be effective until the next council is seated. Any raise that a seated council would get would have to go through a committee that would decide to give them a raise. So the, the council can't actually give itself a raise.
All right, thank you, Nikki. Okay, so moving back to the ordinance nineteen seventy-two twenty amendment to the twenty twenty annual budget, does anybody have any comments or questions for Doug regarding this?
Madam Mayor, just one more comment on that public comment that was just made.
Yeah.
If I may, if I may.
Go ahead, yeah.
City council raise is not even represented in any budget amendment, nothing. It has not even brought up in this budget at this point. I just would like to make that clear to our member of the public that the city council is not giving themselves a raise whatsoever.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kinser, Councilwoman Kinser, all right. So, okay, so moving back to the ordinance nineteen seventy-two twenty, the amendment to the twenty twenty annual budget. Do we have any questions or comments for Mr. Merriman? If not, do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I believe there is a motion, but just to point a personal privilege, I would just like to thank again the staff and, and everyone involved in making quite a comprehensive document that took a lot of time and very well researched and very well presented, and I always look forward to Doug's slides, especially with the turtle in the hair. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. So do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I believe Councilmember Kinser made a motion that was seconded, and then I asked for further discussion.
No, we don't.
Okay, I'm, I'm lost, excuse me.
Yeah, you are, you're lost.
Yes, but I'm in Cedar Woolley, so I'll find myself rather soon, thanks.
Madam Mayor, this is Councilman Allen, I'm dazed, he's confused, okay.
Do you want to make a motion, anybody?
Madam Mayor, this is Councilmember Young, I'd like to move the ordinance for the budget. And my screen went blank, and I'm sorry, I don't have the number.
All right.
Serendipity, miracle of technology, it's a miracle when it works.
Yes, okay.
Back off. Would you like to give me the ordinance number, and then I'll read that?
Yeah, or I can, I can read it at the end, Carl.
Thank you very much, thank you, teamwork.
Madam Mayor, Councilman McLaughlin, all second.
Okay, so we had a motion by Councilman DeYoung, seconded by Councilman McLaughlin, a motion to adopt ordinance nineteen seventy-two twenty, and ordinance amending the annual budget of the city of Cedar Woolley for fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. All right. Motion carries, and we are on to the last item of the night, I do believe, according to my agenda, which is the twenty twenty comprehensive plan docket amendments, and Mr. Coleman, I'll turn this over to you.
All right, thank you, Mayor, hello again, council. So this is, this is our twenty twenty docket. The, the agenda states that this is a first read with action requested. It's actually not really a first read, we've, we've been given the council updates along the way as the planning commission did their work. And we discussed this at the joint planning and city council work session recently, and been updating at city council meetings as well. So it seemed like an issue that the, that the city council was pretty well aware of what had, what had been going on. So we're looking to have this, have action today. Mostly because to, to take action on Mark's sewer comp plan, and there's been applicants that have been waiting for the, for rezone determinations, and we're not going to have a council meeting in, later in December, so we're hoping to move this up. But that doesn't mean that of trying to avoid any full discussion. So if there's any questions, or if there needs to be further, further discussion at council meetings, that's fine. So in the twenty twenty docket, there were a couple of rezone requests, and Mark's update to the, Mark Freiberger and the Public Works Department's update of the sewer comprehensive plan. Now, the way the docket works is, you only, you only get to take action once per, per year on it. So all of the items move through the docket together and get passed at the same time by the council. There's several items on it this year, as I mentioned. There's a lot of information in the packet. When you throw in the sewer comprehensive plan docket, it balloons up to, to, over two hundred and fifty pages. And I apologize for the length, but that's how these things go. The, the docket often is, is a large planning document. The, there are two, there are two proposed ordinances that go along with the, the docket. So if, if the planning, if the city council wanted to pass it, they would pass an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan, which would include the, the comprehensive land use map and adding, doing the amendments to the sewer comprehensive plan. And then there's another ordinance that changes the zoning map. And if there was any changes to, say, development codes, you know, zoning codes and whatnot, there would have been a third ordinance. But there are no changes to development regulations or zoning codes or anything like that. The only changes are to the comprehensive plan and to the zoning map. I, I'm not sure if it's a good use of our time for me to go over blow by blow each of the items on the docket. So I'm happy to go into depth on any of the specific topics that are on, on the docket. But I'll spare you a detailed discussion of any of them in particular unless, unless requested, and then I'd be happy to do so.
John, I have a question.
Councilwoman Kinser.
John, what if we wanted to remove part of the comprehensive plan and pass the remainder of it?
Oh, the, there's several options there, you can, you can remove it, or you can remove an item and, and say, put it on the twenty twenty-one docket for review again, and then that would, that item would go through next year's process and would come back to you roughly this time next year. Or if you, or if the city council wanted to remove it and do some additional work on it that won't take too long, you could delay the rest of the docket while you do additional work on the one item that you're talking about. Or you could review it, and if you just don't, I guess you could also, and if, if it just seems like something that the council doesn't want to approve, you could just not approve it, and then it wouldn't go on to the next year's docket. It would just be an unapproved part of this year's docket, and the rest of the items would be passed.
Okay, and for the, for the purpose of public identity, can you please identify which part of the docket is a gateway golf course piece?
Okay, so within comprehensive plan amendment one, there's the file number rezone dash twenty twenty dash zero one two, which is referred to as the Ruby Rezone. It's three acres of mixed commercial land as being requested to be changed to residential five land. So that three acres is part of the, the larger golf course. The, the, the most, the, the golf course, except for these three acres, is all zoned residential five. One corner of it is zoned, is zoned mixed commercial. And that land is requested to be changed to R five like the rest of the, the golf course. And the, the reason for the rezone request is, you know, for the intent that the, the owner of the golf course intends to submit a, an application to do a subdivision, a residential subdivision on all of the golf course, and would like to also put residential in the area that's zoned to mixed commercial.
Thank you, John, appreciate that.
Can I weigh in on a procedural issue?
Yes, Attorney Thompson.
So if there is a desire to pull something out of the amendments to the comp plan, then both of the ordinances will need separate motions to amend those ordinances. So for example, the, the first ordinance would need a motion to amend the comp plan map to exclude whichever piece you want to exclude and authorize the staff to make any necessary language changes to the ordinance as necessary, as a result of, of the motion to amend.
Thank you, Nikki.
Madam Mayor, may I wait, thank you, Nikki, and thank you, Brenda. I've got one real big problem, I don't know if anybody has driven up above the proposed three acres. It looks like a lake right now, and it hasn't even started raining. I would like, I, I have no problem with the other two zoning map changes, but the, the golf course, I think is sub, subflow, sub flood zone. And if anybody wants to drive up there, including you, John, and look down it, I, I think we're just looking at a FEMA nightmare. So anyway, that's my two bits worth, I, I would be willing to back the other two and put this, send this back to planning and refer the documents back to them. So anyway, that's my two bits worth, Mayor, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. So tell me, is, is that, is that a motion that you are making? Are you making a motion to exclude? You're on mute, you're on mute, Glenn.
I'm going to let somebody younger and smarter on the council make the mo, and if they want, okay. I don't know how to make it. I, I would just like to take this off the, off the docket and send back to planning, and then we will make motions on the other two proposals.
All right.
Does that make sense? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
Oh.
Okay. So are there other comments or, uh, questions that you want to ask of John from the council?
Um, Mayor, I, Glenn, on this proposal.
All right.
Let's, let's remove Ruby at this point. I don't know how to get the verbiage proper.
Um, are you wanting to, so I, I can actually, um, include it in when it comes time to make the motion. I just don't know if there's gonna be other changes. But it would read to, to the likes, um, it would be, you know, which excludes and which includes an amendment to exclude the Ruby Rezone File, RZ twenty twenty zero one two from the ordinance.
I, that would be correct. So we can, um, put it back to, uh, planning for, for the review.
So, okay, from a parliamentary procedure perspective, it first needs to be a motion to amend, um, the ordinance and then a vote on the ordinance itself.
Right. Yeah, I think she was just confused about the verbiage. I think my understanding was she wanted to make a motion or was thinking about it and didn't know how to do it. What would be the verbiage, the wording? Am I correct, Councilwoman Kinser?
Correct, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
All right. So, uh, so are there comments regarding this? Um, are there concerns that you'd like to share? Yes, Councilman McGoffin.
I think you might.
Right?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so I have the same concern as the other two councilmen and women. Um, I would like to know, I don't know if it's in the meeting minutes. I haven't read those yet of the, where they decided three, two to vote for this. But, uh, I'd like to ask John to kind of shed some light on what was their discussion and approval, um, knowing that there's these water issues and the residents that raised these issues. And if we look at page one oh three of our packet, there's a sensitive area map. And there's two fairly sensitive blocks that are right next to where this is being proposed. Um, and I'd just like to know why they voted three, two to approve this.
You're talking about the Planning Commission, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'd be happy to bring up page, you said one oh three? What, what page was the map on?
Uh, one oh three.
Oh, well, I'm scrolling to that. Oh, that just happens to be part of the sewer comprehensive plan. So, um, so the topic of discussion is largely around, right now, the property is zoned mixed commercial. And yes, everybody is well aware of the, the, the water problems that was brought up, um, in the, it was brought up at the, at, by the public, it was brought up by staff, it was discussed. So the issue wasn't really, uh, should, you know, the question isn't, should the property be developed? The question that the Planning Commission was addressing is, what should the zoning of this property be? Right now, it's zoned mixed commercial. So, uh, any day, you know, tomorrow morning, an applicant, the owner, could drop off an application that, for something that meets, um, the mixed commercial zoning requirements and we would accept that application, you know. So mixed commercial, that would be something like a mini mall or a, um, a gas station or a grocery store. It's too small for a grocery store, but I'm trying to think of something, you know, like a convenience store or something like that. Could go in there under its current zoning. Um, as part of the development of that property, the first thing that, that we, we would do is require them to have a, uh, critical areas analysis done. And then they would determine, are there any wetlands, creeks, uh, in the area? And if so, what would the impact of the development be? And, uh, then they would go, they, the, that, that development would be reviewed under the critical areas ordinance. Uh, this area is highly disturbed, so, um, there may be wetlands there, there, there may not be. It's, it's gonna be difficult to really make that determination, but it's clear that there's water. Now, from an engineering standpoint, the, the property, uh, any development on the property would be reviewed for, uh, can it meet, um, building requirements? So if you were to build, uh, use this example before, if you were to build a road through that property, um, you could feasibly do it. What you would need to do is, you know, follow engineering standards and, um, address where the water comes from and where the water will go after any development. Whatever's built there, though, needs to, you know, be built in such a way that the, the structure is not just sitting on muck. It would have to be designed and engineered to meet, uh, meet standards for structural stability in the area. And the water would be diverted, you know. Lots of areas are wetland, uh, that, lots of wetlands throughout the country have been filled and built upon. And that's, that's kind of not an unusual thing. So, um, because there's water there, yes, that, uh, definitely makes it more difficult, but it doesn't make it necessarily unbuildable. But they would need to address what happens with that water and what the areas around it would be affected if they, if that area were to be developed. So having that knowledge, the question is not, should the property be developed? But, um, what is the best zoning for the property? That's the question that the city coun, that the Planning Commission was asked. And, uh, based on their determination and the, their, some of their, uh, their criteria and what they discussed is all, is included in the Planning Commission findings of fact. Uh, stating, you know, the, the, there's residences on the north and south of there. And, um, so it seemed to make sense for it to be residential. Um, so that, that's just part of the discussion that went in. But they were careful to review, you know, not should the property be developed, but what's the best zoning for the property?
Thank you, John.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Owen.
Yeah, I, I agree with Councilman Allen. You know, I've been around here for years and I golfed down there, uh, probably five or six years and when they had a league. And it's always been wet and, and this time of year it's super wet. And I've never, I've never seen it bone dry. And if there's any such thing as wetlands, that has to be taken into consideration because it is. And I'm sure they'll have someone in EPA or somebody come in and, and check that out. But I, I, I just don't know where the water would go to. I, I was thinking Brickyard Creek run through there. Is that right, John?
Yes, um, Councilman Owen, you are absolutely correct. The Brickyard Creek and a, and a small tributary to Brickyard Creek run through that property. Uh, Brickyard Creek doesn't run through the three acres that are proposed for rezoning, but the tributary does, along the edge of it, actually. Um, and so any, any tributary like that has a one hundred and ten foot critical area buffer that cannot be built on. Um, that can be reduced down to fifty-five feet from the ordinary high water mark if they have a biologist, uh, design a mitigation plan that, uh, improves the, um, the wetland, the, the, the adjacent riparian area to the creek to make it better for, uh, you know, fishing critters that live along the creek. And, uh, so there are ways to reduce the, the buffer, but there are buffers on the crit, on the creek. And, uh, that's ultimately where the water would likely be directed if the property were to be developed.
I think I see, um, Councilman DeYoung.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I just have a, a point of, uh, uh, order here is that we're running up against our two hour deadline. I, I, I move to extend the meeting by half hour.
Is there a second?
A second. Uh, Councilman McGoffin.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, very good. Thank you, Councilman DeYoung. So moving on then with the discussion, um, are there, are there comments that council would like to make? Questions that they may have?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Cass.
Um, I just have something that I'd like to say as far as it being zoned for housing. My concern is, um, that the Evergreen School is already overcrowded and bursting at the seams and adding extra homes in that area will just create more of it. So that's just my food for thought on that.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Madam Mayor, may I ask, uh, one more question for John?
Yes, go ahead, Councilman McGoffin.
Thank you. If we, John, if we make this motion to amend the ordinance to not include the Ruby Rezone, is there enough evidence or reason that the Planning Commission would vote any differently than the three, two that they've already done?
Um, well, they, they studied it pretty thoroughly. So there wouldn't be a whole lot of new information to present to them that might change their mind, but we could always, uh, look for more information. Um, Councilmember Caste brought up, uh, the schools. Um, that is one thing that we've discussed in, um, and just as a broader topic of, of discussion and, and how growth in, uh, in the area works is the, you know, as the planning department, we have this document that we're reviewing, the critic, the comprehensive plan. And, and it, uh, it addresses our twenty year growth plan. Um, it states that, you know, we're between two thousand seventeen and two, and twenty thirty-six, we're anticipating four thousand four, five hundred and fifty-five additional residents. And that's what this, that's what this comprehensive plan and our development regulations do is try to put in to, uh, affect policies and regulations to address the projected growth over the next twenty years. And the school district is a partner in that. So they, they understand that the property is, uh, that properties in the city are going to develop. And they're expecting, you know, a, a number of children that would go along with four thousand five hundred and fifty-five additional residents over the next twenty years. And every new residential unit pays, um, a school impact fee. Uh, currently, it's, the school district has set that at one thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars per unit. That goes towards building additional facilities to accommodate the growth of, uh, the growth in the area. So, um, you know, the, the environmental factors such as traffic, um, schools, parks, uh, impact on fire and police, those, those are all anticipated and, um, and addressed in the comp plan and our city and school regulations. The Planning Commission did discuss that topic, the, they understand that too. So it's, this isn't adding additional three acres of land that it, that would be unplanned necessarily. That's just, uh, more, uh, more of the things that the Planning Commission discusses and definitely one of the topics that, uh, was brought up, uh, and in, in the minds of the planning commissioners.
John, this is, uh, Councilman Allen. Are you there?
Yes.
Uh, New Orleans build under sea level, where has that got them? You know, I mean, are these three acres that critical for growth in Seadrwelly?
That's definitely a, a question that the council and the planning commission get to answer. You get to take, make the tough decisions, but we get to provide you as much information as we can. Um, if, if we haven't provided enough information, uh, we're, we can keep going. But three acres here and there is kind of, you know, it's not, that's not a, that's not a large amount, um, to be critical. Nor is it, uh, a large amount that makes a big difference in the twenty year planning document.
So I guess my question before the council is, do you want to move forward with this, um, docket as it, as it is stated? Or is there, are there changes that you want to make to it? Um, I am looking to see where you want to go with this.
Madam Mayor, I, I have a, I have a question.
Councilman DeYoung, yeah.
Yeah, thank you so much. Um, I just wanted to make sure I had the numbers right. On the Planning Commission voted two, three on this. I thought there were seven people on the, on that commission. So the full commission wasn't able to hear or make that decision. And, uh, was this just a subcommittee report? I, could you go over the, why we don't have the full, uh, Planning Commission's vote on this? Thank you.
So, um, not all the planning commission members were at that meeting. We, they had, uh, they had delayed it from the previous month to get, to get, try to get a full, number of planning commission members there, but the, that's, there were just five, uh, in attendance that day.
Thank you, John.
Um, Councilman? Yes?
Thank you. Um, I just, I just kind of want to make a comment as well as regarding the, um, the acreage and the homes and things such as that when it comes to planning, um, I guess, that had been done in the past as to right now. Um, my kids can't even drink the water at Evergreen. So the planning that was done previously, you know, to get to where we are now, I think those extra houses and the extra kids, it, it does make a difference. So I, I just want to say that as well.
All right, thank you. And I want to go back to you, Councilwoman Kinser. I know twice you've tried to, uh, speak.
Madam Mayor, what is the proper verbiage that we should speak in order to pass this ordinance or amendment on ordinance excluding the Ruby property? I would like to do that.
All right, okay. So it would be a motion to adopt ordinance nineteen seventy-three twenty, amending the Seadrwelly Con, Comprehensive Plan, which would ex, which includes an amendment to exclude the Ruby Rezone File Number, RZ twenty twenty zero one two from said ordinance.
Madam Mayor, may I state that as so moved?
All right, I have a motion. Is there a second?
A second, Madam.
So I have a motion by Councilwoman Kinser, uh, to, um, I'll just read it again. Make a motion to pa, to adopt the ordinance nineteen seventy-three twenty, amending the Seadrwelly Comprehensive Plan, which includes an amendment to exclude the Ruby Rezone File, RZ twenty twenty zero one two, and seconded by Councilman Owen. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign? Okay, looks like the motion carries.
And Madam Mayor, I would like to include that, we would like to, um, include that for future Ruby, the Ruby property for future discussion.
Okay, so you would like it to go back to the planning committee or de, or commission? Or do you want it to be further discussion with the council? What are you looking?
Further discussion with the planning commission regarding wetlands and so forth.
Perfect, okay, good, all right, thank you. Yes, Councilman McGoffin, yeah?
I, I'd also add that I'd like to see the full planning commission vote on that as well.
Okay, so, um, John, um, is that gonna work? Okay.
So, uh, I might, I might ask Nikki for a little bit of, uh, assistance on this. Um, Nikki, do we treat this as remanded back to the Planning Commission on the twenty twenty-one docket? Or, I mean, there's no reason, if the council just doesn't approve of this rezone, um, you know, you, you're, you're also, I believe, okay to say, you, you just don't approve it based on the information that was provided through the hearings process and you had the chance to review. So, um, just wondering if, if it's going back for twenty twenty-one docket or? it's going back for 2021 docket, or?
So I understood that Councilwoman Kinser was requesting that it be remanded to Planning Commission.
That is correct.
On next year's docket.
That's what it have to be.
And I thought, John, you made mention of that, that actually it would come back about this time next year. Isn't that what you shared?
If it's the 2021 docket. I just wanted to be clear that that's what we're doing.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman DeYoung?
I'm sorry, this poor horse. Just to, just to be clear, to reemphasize what Planning Director Coleman brought, that is already in mixed use. So someone could come in and apply for that, and there'd be building. And also to counterpoint Bourbon Street in New Orleans there, my Dutch culture has erupted and said, you know, the Netherlands certainly was made underwater as well. But I do respect what we need to do with the sensitive areas, and I do agree with the councils as a whole that this needs to be investigated. I'm glad we're bringing it back down to the, to the commission, and I hope that we can get all the members there, and that this is an important matter that can be communicated to the commission. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I think, Mr. Coleman, I think, Mr. Coleman, you also addressed, when you and I were having discussion going over the materials and whatnot, you had made mention that there's actually several studies that have to happen before anything is built on that property. And so it's not, it's not just a done deal because somebody decides they're going to build. It actually is quite a complicated and convoluted situation, correct, Mr. Coleman?
Yeah, any development that happens on that property, we would definitely hold the applicant's feet to the fire and make, make them be, do very, very detailed studies of whether or not there's critical areas, and how all of the water is going to be addressed if it, in order to do any development there. Because, yeah, it's clear that there's water there, and there's no question about it.
All right, thank you. Somebody else was trying to?
Madam Mayor, can I?
Yes, go ahead, Councilman Allen.
I'm sorry to drag this meeting on longer and dragging staff and you and fellow commissioners or councilpeople, but thank you very much, okay? I'm sorry to?
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. So, Councilwoman Kinser, did you have something you wanted to say?
I was just encouraging Glenn to go ahead and speak.
Okay, all right. All right. Thank you, everybody. I do want to make just kind of a note. I think you saw under, let me see here, it would be under information, information only where it's talking about the Joint Rotary Club and City Community Center restroom restoration project. Before Nathan had, well, I should say, Nathan submitted this and put it in with the, with the agenda. But for those of you who are not in the Rotary Club, and for those of us who are, we do know that actually the Rotary Club may not be moving forward with this this year, or I should say 2021. I just want to give you a heads up regarding that. They are looking to do some special funding for Helping Hands Food Bank. So they're trying to do both. They actually have a special fundraiser going on right now with matching funds so that they can do both. But I wanted to make you aware that we see this, we see this in the budget. I actually had it in my mayor letter as well, and we don't really know if that's going to move forward or not based upon what decision the Rotary Club will be making. So to give you a heads up, and we'll, we'll keep you informed as to what happens there. So thank you so much for staying over. This was a?
Point of order, I don't think that you passed the second ordinance. You only passed the first ordinance. You didn't pass the second ordinance adopting the map.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Okay, so, yes, which is the rezone map. So we do need a motion to adopt ordinance 197420, amending the Cedar Wally zoning map, which includes an amendment to exclude the Ruby rezone file, RZ 2020-012, from said ordinance. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember DeYoung moving ordinance 1974-20.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman McGoffin, a second.
All right. Perfect. All right. So we have a motion by Councilman DeYoung, seconded by Councilman McGoffin, to make the motion to adopt 197420, amending the zoning map for Cedar Wally, and that will include an amendment to exclude the Ruby rezone file, RZ 2020-012, from said ordinance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign? Thank you. And thank you, Attorney Thompson. Appreciate that. That would have been a, would have been a boo-boo. All right. So is, you look like you were going to say something, Councilman DeYoung.
Yeah, I know about that point. I was hoping that you had some insight about some COVID reports. I'm trying to bring up my screen here, and it's having a hard time. So we had 48 cases yesterday and 19 today in Skagit County, brings a total of 2,337 cases, 157 hospitalizations, and 31 deaths. Is there any way to get a breakout of how that more detailed, specific to Cedar Wally? Is there, is there a way to get that information for future reports?
Yeah, you know, they don't, they don't share that information. That information is not shared with us.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
If I may speak, jump in there, Mayor. You can get that number by zip code, but that zip code also includes Hamilton's area, so it's not specifically to the city of Cedar Wally.
I'm, I'm a data guy, kind of like to see how we're doing. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. So with further ado, we are adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.
Happy holidays. Oh, look at the, aye!
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Brandon.